All right, well, welcome everyone to the senior city council. And before we get started with our formal agenda, we'll start with a word of prayer. So you please stand. And Albert from Victory Life is gonna lead us. Pastor Albert's gonna give us a word of prayer.
Good evening, everybody. Heavenly Father, we just come before you tonight in Jesus' name. Lord, we thank you for these leaders of our city represented in this room tonight. Father, we ask that you keep your hand upon them. Lord, as they make decisions that affect our city, Lord, we just ask that you give them wisdom and discretion in these matters. Father, we pray that you give them grace for the responsibilities that they carry. Father, we just pray that you continue to keep our cities safe and moving us forward in prosperity in Jesus' name and amen.
If you please face the flag. And Councilman Dean, would you leave us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. All right, let me go ahead and gavel in our meeting this evening. And the first item on our agenda is go ahead and take roll call.
Vice President Smith?
Here.
Councilman Crawford?
Here.
Councilwoman Seres?
Here.
Councilman Reynolds?
Here.
Councilman Dean?
Here.
Mayor Mays?
Here.
President Ursula?
Here. Next item is the approval of our minutes from our last meeting on February 8th. Do I have a motion for that?
A motion approved, last meeting minutes.
Thanks, James, for that motion.
I will second that.
Councilwoman Seres. We'll do a second on that. Any comments before we take the vote on that? All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Ursula?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you so much. We do not have any special presentations for this evening. And so the next item on our agenda is audience comments. If you would like to come and speak to the council or share something with council, feel free to do that. Please just come to the podium and just state your name and your address. And if we talk to us, just realize too, this is not a conversation time. This is a time for you to just give us some information. And we may discuss that at towards the end of the meeting at that point. So feel free, if you'd like to come up at this time.
Hello, my name is Joseph DeAngelo. My wife Angela. We live at 2685 Savenus Terrace in Beaver Creek. And we're looking forward to joining the Xenia community a little bit more strongly through the building on 130 East Church Street, bringing in some business to the area. We're an R and D engineering firm, so we look forward to it. And to extend our tentacles into Xenia because we also have four grandchildren over at St. Bridget's. So we'll get more into the Xenia area. Thank you for letting us introduce ourselves.
Great, great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming this evening. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Okay, we'll go ahead and close out the audience comments at this time. On whole business, our first item is ordinance 2024-02. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. And this is amending certain provisions of Title IV Utilities of the City Streets, Utilities and Public Service Code as enacted by ordinance 2023-38 and amending the effective dates of ordinance 2023-33, ordinance 2023-35, and ordinance 2023-38. And that was introduced by Mayor Mays on the 8th of February of this year.
Thank you, sir. I will go ahead and move the passage.
Great, thank you. Do I have a second? Right. And so at this time, I'll ask Madam Law Director, you want to make a few comments before we go to the public hearing?
I can. Basically, what this ordinance does, the three ordinances that you read the title of, 2023-33, 2023-35, and 2023-38, if you recall, those amended the three titles within Part 10, which is the city's streets, utilities, and other public services code. We had originally anticipated an effective date on those three ordinances in the trans March 1st after discussion with council. It was agreed that we want to push the effective date of those three back until June 1st. So this ordinance does that. As to the amendments that we're making, at the time that you enacted 2023-38, final decision as far as the public service department and how that department was going to be restructured, were not finalized. So the decision had since been made. The public service director and the city engineer are being split into two separate roles. So what we did was go back through that rewrite to which regulations are more properly made by the city engineer, which are more properly made by the public service director. So that's really all those amendments do is make sure those duties are properly assigned to one or the other.
Right, great, great.
Thank you.
Chair, anything else to add to that before we go to the public hearing?
I'd just say you passed this as an emergency at your last meeting. This is just the normal process so that it doesn't automatically repeal itself.
Right, great, okay. Well, at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone has anything to speak in favor or against, or just some observations on this ordinance, please feel free to come to the podium and share your thoughts. Seeing we have no one, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from council before we vote on this? Great, all right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Sir, I didn't get your second on that motion. Ethan.
Ethan, yeah, Councilman Reynolds.
Vice President Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Crawford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seres?
Yes.
Councilman Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Ursula?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item is, this is new business. And so this is an emergency ordinance. This is ordinance 2024-03. And this is providing appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Xenia, Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024, and declaring an emergency. And this is the 2024 annual appropriation ordinance. Let's see, Mr. Finance Director, Ryan, do you want to share some thoughts on this before we?
Well, I think, I think the city manager is...
I'll let our assistant city manager go first. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is an annually reoccurring item. It's our annual budget essentially. This is a compilation of work that began last spring with department heads and the council finance and budget committee and various meetings throughout all of last year and even as recently as last week with the finance and budget committee, going through this and making some final tweaks which have been incorporated into the final budget as well. The overall budget maintains all core city services and continues an increased investment in city's infrastructure, including improvements at the Justice Center, Market Street, the Market District, and Country Club, other annual street paving projects. The total budget or total appropriations is $98,534,269.59. This is nowhere near what we will actually spend as this reflects and totals and transfers between funds. So a lot of those monies are double counted. And there is contingency in there as well. So the actual expenses will be much lower than that. But we are requesting this as an emergency tonight, just so we can proceed with projects and continue funding city services. I don't know, Ryan, you have anything else you want to add?
No, we're statutorily required to adopt this budget by the end of March. We're currently operating on a temporary budget. And what's being presented tonight is very much in line with what was already approved in temporary budget and presented to council back in October. So there are some minor changes. Those things were discussed with, with the budget and finance committee. Probably the most significant alteration was removing the expenditure for a replacement of the fire station from the budget and keeping in only the portion that would facilitate land acquisition for that project. The belief being that it was very unlikely that we were actually going to get into a construction phase here this year. So that was the most significant change that came out of those conversations with the, with the budget committee. But for the most part, this reflects what was presented to council back in October. We've been operating on a temporary for the last month and a half. And this will be the final appropriations. Any other appropriations that are required for the rest of the year would be brought to council as an additional amendment to this, to this appropriation.
Right. And I'd just say, for those of you, you know, for those of us at the finance and budget committee, we, there's funds there for, you know, for appropriation of the land for the site. There's, there's funds there for the engineering and architectural work that needs to be done. But it was just our sense that those activities would be the ones that would be funded this year, the actual procurement, you know, and the start of the building would most likely not for this fiscal year. So we recommend we remove that from the budget. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Can we explain, like, if someone's watching and they're new or they're a new member, that we are voting this as an emergency, as a procedural formality, that this action takes place? There's always confusion. The public says, oh, they're, they're in an emergency situation or a financial crisis. And that is not the case here.
Right.
Emergency means that this action has to take place now, not in the normal first and second reading.
Yeah.
The charter actually requires that you do appropriations by emergency.
Is that correct, Ryan?
And the rationale for that is, is pretty simple. When, when you introduce something and you have the normal repeal period, it's problematic. For appropriations, when you, when you approve an appropriation and we spend the dollars, there's no going back and, you know, once you've, once you've contracted for those services, you're obligated to make payment. And so that's, that's the difference when you're talking about an appropriation ordinance. Once that funding is made available by council and staff creates a PO, services are rendered, products provided, you, you can't go back and repeal that like you could another, another ordinance in a waiting period, so.
I'd also say that, you know, some of the modifications that happened is, you know, we had requested some funds be set aside for activities in the park and some funds to, you know, we have 26 neighborhoods in Xenia. And so we're looking at taking care of the long-term road maintenance for one of those neighborhoods this year, but that's also in this budget as well, too.
Real fast, Mr. Duke, how many years is left on the administrative building bond payment? Do you have that? I don't have it right in front of me, but it was a 30-year obligation. I think we issued those bonds in 14. So we're, we're probably still at another 21 years, maybe even 22 years. I'd have to look at the timing of, of those payments. But, yeah, it was a 30-year bond, and I think we're almost a third of the way through that. I'm close. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
No comment for move this as an emergency, second motion.
Okay, moved by the vice president, seconded by Councilman Reynolds. Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Ursula?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Next item is ordinance 2024-04. This will also be an emergency ordinance. And this is amending ordinance 2023-02, approving the sale and conveyance of the city-owned property at 130 East Church Street, which is roughly a little bit below an acre, 0.95 acres, to Savenus LLC and declaring an emergency. Mr. City Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. As council is aware, we have received several offers to purchase 130 East Church Street, which has been listed for sale with a local realtor. The offer before you is from Savenus LLC. It's associated with DeAngelo Technologies, a local research and development company, seeking to expand into Xenia. The offer is for $330,000. And as part of this offer, there is a rezoning that would be needed, which has been initiated through Planning and Zoning Commission already. So that is working through the process and will come back before council as well. But staff is excited to fill the vacant building and excited about this business growth in the community, so we recommend approval of this tonight.
Great, thanks so much. Do you have a motion?
Some would.
Moved by the mayor, by the mayor, and seconded by Councilman Reynolds. Thank you. Questions or comments here?
Just like to say, certainly welcome you. Thank you very much.
Very excited.
For your interest and investment in our community. Thank you.
Yeah, this is, you know, we thought we had, the reason we're amending this previous ordinance was we thought we had a sale last year and that unfortunately didn't, didn't occur. But we're, we're really pleased about you, about what you folks are looking to do there with the, with the land and the opportunities there within our community and stuff. So thanks, folks, for coming this evening and also being willing to step into Xenia and invest here as well, too, yeah.
You know, I could say something for the city. I think for the city by and large, I want to just say thank you for cooperating and willing to, willing to work without, you know, just, I know we have bounds and limitations by what, what you can do. But I think in this particular case, I want to just thank you for your understanding and your support of this as well, just from my perspective. Thank you.
Great. All right, well, we got a motion and a second. What's, anyone else? Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Upstaying.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Excuse me. Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Ursula?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, and I'll just, for the public, James is saying not because he's not enthusiastic, it's because he has a potential conflict of interest and he needs just to recuse himself from that. Is that a fair statement, James?
That's a fair statement.
Great, thank you.
And it has recused from all conversations.
In all conversations up to this point, he has recused himself as well. Yes, thank you, James. Thank you, Mayor, yep. Next item is Resolution 2024-007, authorizing the purchase of a boom mower tractor through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program, through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program, and a boom mower head through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program for the public service department. Mr. Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. The attached resolution is seeking to replace a 24-year-old boom mower tractor and mower attachment as well. The city uses this tractor for mowing unique and hard-to-reach areas, mostly along roadways and state routes around the city. The equipment, equipment mechanic for the city reports that there's a string of issues and expenses coming up, including a potential replacement of a clutch and new tires. And due to its age, it's getting harder and harder to find parts. So we're seeking to replace this. If authorized this evening, it would still be till September. We have to make it work through the summer before we likely get a replacement actually in. The new tractor is a hall, or it will replace the Holland tractor, which will be surplus once we get the new one in and trade it in. It is the recommendation of staff that we pass this resolution this evening to authorize the purchase of the boom mower tractor from Deere and Company through Sourcewell, as well as the boom mower head from Dexter Company through the Ohio Purchasing Program at a combined price of $179,788.88.
Great, do I have a, this is, do I have a motion on this resolution? Councilman Reynolds, thank you.
Move to approve Resolution 007.
I'll second that.
Second it, Councilwoman Seres. Any comments or question here before we vote? Let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Ursula?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Next is Resolution 2024-008, which is authorizing the purchase of 12.338 acres from the Woodlands Cemetery Association. Mr. Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. The property here is being offered for sale to the city from the Woodlands Cemetery Association, which is located off, the property is located off Towler Road. It's currently vacant land used for agricultural use. It's adjacent to the city's closed landfill. And the landfill has been on Ohio EPA's radar just for potential concerns and migration of gases that could leave the landfill. So the city has an interest in acquiring this property just to ensure that it remains undeveloped and there's no future concern for any conflict with migration of things away from the landfill. By acquiring the property, it would save us from future extraction systems or containment systems that we would have to put in because there would be an increased buffer around the landfill. Staff worked with the property management committee and negotiated a purchase price of $150,000, which has been reviewed and supported by the property management committee as well. Staff is seeking approval of this resolution to move forward with the purchase this evening.
Great, thank you. Do you have a motion?
Some would, sir.
Moved by the mayor, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Reynolds. Great. Questions or comments before we vote?
I do have a quick question.
Sure, go ahead.
Jared, do you know with the land that might be rented by the potential farmer, what that would bring in?
It's usually very minimal. I haven't negotiated a price with him or anything, but we do lease farmland next to the Glady Run sewer plant. I think it's a hundred bucks an acre, so it pretty much just covers taxes. The, the really small, unique parcel is not ideal farmland, but I believe the farmer who has farmed that previously for, for the cemetery station would like to keep farming it. So I expect a lease to come back to you in the next month or so.
Fantastic, thank you. You know, one of the benefits, you're right, you're not going to get much from a lease on a small acreage, you know, from that perspective. But what it does do is it keeps the brush down and keeps the land clear. And that's, that's of value because otherwise we would have to do that service.
Exactly.
So, and I'd just say for the public that the, how long's the landfill been closed now?
1980?
1994.
So it's been a while, and there were a lot of things were placed in there that maybe today we would not necessarily do that. And the, the type of provisions that the EPA did back in 94 to cap it, we wouldn't necessarily do today. But this was, this was just serendipity that this came up. And actually, I think the Cemetery Association approached us about that they didn't have use for that. And normally, the city does not, is not looking to acquire property. But in this case, to provide that buffer zone around that landfill so that we don't have future issues is, is of great value to the city, so.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
The zoning on this lot is agricultural, apparently.
I think it's not been separated from the cemetery parcel yet. So there, there's a survey being done that will separate it. I assume it'll stay agricultural, though.
And is there any potential use, future use for city use, park?
Probably not.
Combining the parks?
Yeah.
I'd like to see a centralized park.
Yeah, it could maybe be green space, but that might be the most. I don't think we want the maintenance right now, so we plan to continue farming it for the foreseeable future.
Okay.
All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Ursula?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Next item is Resolution 2024-009, authorizing the purchase of 26 portable radios and eight remote speaker microphones for the Fire and EMS Division and the Police Division under the current contract with P and R Communications. Mr. Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are continuing on with a replacement program we started last year, replacing these handheld radios that our public safety services carry. The current radios are all about 17 years old and are needed replacement both due to wear and tear, as well as new standards from the state for encryption. So we're looking to replace a portion of these every couple, over five years essentially to replace all of them within our public safety division. So hopefully by 2028, we'll be done replacing all of them, and we can sit down for a few years without replacing these. But staff is requesting tonight the purchase of 26 ruggedized portable radios and eight remote speaker microphones with those for a price of $149,136.29.
Do you have a motion? Moved by the mayor, a second, seconded by Councilman Reynolds, thank you. Any questions or comments before we vote on this?
Is that compatible with the Mark system?
Yeah.
Let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Ursula?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Next item is Resolution 2024-010, approving the final plat and authorizing the execution of a subdividers agreement with Van Eaton LLC for the Eden Bridge subdivision, Section 3.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution is seeking council approval for the final plat of Eden Bridge subdivision, Section 3. This is 8.295 acres and will include 35 single-family lots, single-family home lots. Planning and zoning voted to recommend to city council approval this evening at their, from, from their February 7th meeting. Following council's approval, subdividers agreement will need to be executed, and then the applicant can install utilities as well as base layer of roadways. All of those details are outlined in your agenda packet there. Staff is recommending that council adopt this resolution to approve the plat and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement, subdividers agreement on behalf of the city with Van Eaton LLC.
Great, do you have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 010.
I second that motion.
So moved by Councilman Reynolds and James did a second on that, thank you. Any questions or comments before we vote? Just like to say, thank you, Brian, to, for all the hard work on, and also with the planning, zoning, and all the folks that has been part of getting, it's, it's been so pleasant to drive along Van Eaton and see the subdivision. I mean, literally, it's just springing alive, right? And that's just one of a number around town. And, 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 you know, to know that a lot of new families are going to be moving in these homes, right? Have, 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 have any been purchased at this point, and families moving at this point? Okay, great, yeah. So that's just wonderful, so. So anyways, thank you, folks, and we also have Representative Alper here. Thank you for coming and being with us tonight as well, too. All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Ursula?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is Resolution 2024-011, authorizing the execution of income tax rebate agreement with Campus Crusade for Christ Inc., DBA Athletes in Action pursuant to Section 881.26 of the Xenia City Code.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city is excited to see continued expansion and growth at the world headquarters of Athletes in Action here in Xenia. Their new wooden family field house is currently under construction, which is 64,000 square feet of indoor sports training. square feet of indoor sports training, and they expect to bring an additional four hundred thousand of visitors to campus each year with this new building.
Say that number again.
Four hundred thousand visitors.
Four hundred thousand.
They're still in the fundraising phase of the second part of the project, which is an enclosed dome for sports fields as well, and as part of their fundraising, they have come to the city to request an income tax rebate, which will assist in the overall funding of the project. The rebate rebates one percent of payroll. Remember, the city collects two and a quarter percent of payroll as income tax, so we would rebate one percent of that back to them for five years if they agree to keep payroll within the city for ten years and have at least seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand annually increase because of this, which they expect to have. So there's clawback provisions if they fail to keep those requirements of the program, but the actual rebate amount will vary based on what payroll actually is and what the withholding is for those employees. Staff is recommending approval of this income tax rebate with Athletes in Action authorizing this rebate this evening, and if, and recommending that council pass this so that the agreements can be signed by the city manager.
You have a motion?
I move to pass Resolution zero-one-one.
I'll second that motion.
Great, so.
It's exciting times. You've come to town.
James, a second?
Out of jobs. It's exciting.
Yep. Any comments or questions? You know, AI came to the city twenty years ago and moved their headquarters from halfway between here and Cincinnati, and I don't think anybody had any idea about the investment that they would have done there with the, with the Ohio Veterans Children's Home. They have literally invested tens of millions of dollars for the outside, you know, college quality fields and facilities, the High Ropes Course, and then the refurbishment of fifteen of the buildings on campus, and just, just a beautiful restoration of that whole campus there. And as they took over the leadership of the campus from Legacy Ministries International, they continued working extremely well with their partner groups there, with the legacy schools, with the church, National Church residences as well, and some other subgroups of crew, and a couple at the radio station, those kind of things, so to see them continue the vision there of being a multi-campus use for various nonprofit organizations has just been amazing, so. I'm excited to see them, you know, be able to step out completely, and we think about, once again, the number of people that are going to be coming to Xenia as they're going to be coming to that particular location, and what that would mean for the rest of the community is just, is just amazing, so. So anyways, thanks, Jared, for working with them on this. Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschul?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. All right, we have a few procedural motions here, and I'll start with Councilman Dean.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're going to go ahead and with the resignation, Tyler Ritchie, the last one, he's only commissioned appoint Mr. Seres to planning and zoning, so I'd like to recommend that.
Great, great, and you had an opportunity to talk to him?
I was not able to talk to him.
But you got his resignation as well, right?
He came highly recommended, so.
Any questions or comments on that before we, we call the vote?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Yeah, I think we'll do these separate, yeah, we'll go ahead and do those separately, so, great, well, this is just a general comment to everyone, realize that these folks that are going to be coming into the planning, zoning, to BZA and XREC, these are not paid positions, and this is just a lot of time provided by folks in our city that just want to come and serve the community, so, thank you both to the folks who are already on these committees and the ones that are stepping forward and saying they're willing to do this as well, too, and a lot of times they serve in, not in a lot of the public light, and a lot of times they, they have to work some really hard decisions for us as a council, but they take a lot of burden off of us as a council in terms of all these positions that they have, so. All right, well, let's go ahead and, we have a, a motion in a second, let's go ahead and call the vote on this to, to accept Steve Seres? Yeah, into the, in the planning zoning?
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
I'm going to ask to recuse myself as I know Mr. Seres.
Great.
That being in the form of an extension?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschul?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Great. Did we tell Steve about that thousand-dollar fee for joining?
Did he have to pay upfront?
That's right, pay upfront, that's right, great. Next, James.
The BZA had a vacancy that due to one of the members actually relocating, and I talked with two individuals who were very interested in the position, very qualified at that. I made a selection pretty much based on the strength and the agileness of the, of the person applying in terms of learning and how well they fitted into new situations, and my choice was, he calls himself JD, it's James McAvis?
Miskavich.
Miskavich, okay. Well, we met, we met right outside of UD at, at, just, and we spent about an hour, you know, in that, in that topic discussion, was impressed with his, just, just how he presents himself and his interest in the BZA. Big character kind of guy, so with that, that's my selection, and that was my recommendation to the group.
Great, great, thanks. I've known JD for a number of years, and I think that's, that's going to be a great selection as well, so thank you for, for meeting with him. So, we have a motion?
Second.
A second by Ethan, great.
Am I in the motion?
Yes. Did you move on that? I'm going to give you the opportunity.
No, I didn't move on.
No, I just thought, I was not making this one, no, that was good, that was good.
Want to move on this, right? You want to, you want to give us a motion?
I give a motion.
Great, continue. Seconded by Ethan, great, thank you. Any other questions or comments before we call the vote? All right, let's vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschul?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Great. Mayor?
Thank you. I'm the chair of the XREC Board, which is our recreation board, and Ethan Reynolds was on our board. Thank you for your time.
Loved it.
Can't do both, so we had three people who were interested, I had an opportunity to interview all three. Liz is the one that I have nominated to, or am going to make a motion tonight?
Right.
To put forth, all three were very qualified, and I am in conversation, looking forward to working with the other two applicants as well in some other capacities there. Every single one of them said whether they were nominated tonight or not, they would still be involved.
Sure.
Liz is newer to the area, very excited to be involved and get invested in Xenia, very excited about the community, so I'm making a motion to appoint Liz Bowen, Elizabeth Bowen, for the term that expires July thirty-one, twenty-twenty-eight.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Reynolds. Any questions or comments before we vote?
It was a great commission to be on, so, yeah, I loved it.
All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschul?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Great. The last item is the, a motion to reappoint David Thompson to our Green County Combined Health District Board of Health for a four-year term commencing on February twenty-ninth, twenty-two, twenty-four through February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-eight. David is one of our current representatives on that board, and we have an opportunity as a city to be able to get a citizen to represent us on that, so I'll go ahead and make this motion, I know I've known David personally for decades, and a lot of time what we're doing on this board is just getting someone with some wisdom to be able to work with them on a context that's not so much about, necessarily about reporting back to us, but having a citizen from our community that represents our, our city well, and can do that within the combined health district board, so. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second, Mayor Ethan, thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschul?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. Next, we have an opportunity for our appointed official to report, so, Planners Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is often when I speak off the cuff, sometimes I'm mistaken, I look back at the bond issue for this building, and it's actually kind of a weird structure, but it's a twenty-four-point-one-year term, so two thousand and thirty-nine is the last, last payment, so we actually are a little closer to having the building paid off than what I had thought, so, thought I'd update that, and then I have nothing else this evening.
Thank you. And a law director?
Just one thing, and hopefully I'm not speaking out of turn, I've had conversation this week with the city manager, and I know he will fool you in more at the next meeting. As someone who went to Tennessee for the two thousand and seventeen eclipse?
Oh, right.
We've got a full, total eclipse, Xenia's going to be on the edge of it, the path of totality is north, April eighth, it's going to be insane.
With the people coming, right?
It will be insane.
Yeah.
We are looking at that as staff, what are we going to do, access, it's, it's not just, I think, people coming to Xenia, it will be people heading further north, the path of totality, the middle of the path will actually be up near Sydney, Ohio, and heading, heading that way.
Right.
We would encourage local businesses, start thinking about that, but just to let council know, since the city manager's not here tonight, that is on our radar?
Right.
And I know he'll have more to report to you on that, and if you've never seen one before, it is the most amazing thing you'll ever see. If you haven't ordered your solar eclipse glasses, I'd highly encourage you to do it now, if you can still find them.
Yeah. We were at the Board of Education meeting last week, and they moved to, they're not going to have school in session, principally from a safety perspective, because when schools will be letting out at three o'clock is right at the peak of the eclipse?
Yes.
And they really did not want the kids on the, on the road, in the buses, in the midst of all the chaos and things that are going to be going on at that time.
Yeah, that's great planning on the schools part, because what I saw is everybody shows up at once in the Monday day, so over everybody else tries to leave at once, so, just for our citizens to kind of be thinking about that and planning, if you have the ability to work remotely, you might want to think about doing it on that day, but I know Brent will have more information for you at the next meeting on the city, what the city's planning.
Any questions for the law director? Thank you. Jared?
I have nothing additional.
Any questions for the Assistant City Manager? I just want to mention that Brent is, is away from us, looking at a, a very unique opportunity for us to come alongside and help with our Public Safety Services, and so anyways, glad that he's able to do that, and Jared, thanks for stepping in while Brent's out for a couple of days. Questions for Jared? Let's go to council comments, Councilman Reynolds.
So, Budget Committee, Budget Assistant, my name's Bennett, last week to discuss the budget that we voted on tonight, during that budget discussions, we, as you had mentioned earlier, Mr. President, that we removed four million from the Fire Department and instead focused more on going out and making sure that we can, you know, acquire the land?
Right.
And then do the engineering instead of having all in the budget at one time?
Right.
And that is all I have.
Great, thank you.
Anytime?
Councilwoman Seres?
I have not had any of my committees meet as of yet, so I have nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Okay, great, Councilman Crawford?
I had the pleasure of attending the selection ceremony for the tenth Central State University president, and I'm not even going to try to pronounce his name, but I was extremely humbled of his passion for teaching students and young minds as to what's ahead for them. I, I, that was, that was quite obvious, I mean, I was surprised, and, and thank you for allowing me to, to attend with you as well.
Yeah.
And I, this week I, I took a tour through the Community STEM Academy, STEAM Academy, got a chance to, to speak and see that process and that learning cycle and what, what, what their structure is about, spent about an hour or fifteen there as well, and I was impressed that they're not only learning, but they know why they're learning what they're learning, which I said to him, I says, if that, if that school was available while I was a kid, I would have been so much better than what I am today, but, but they are just a tremendous opportunity for education there for, for the right, for the right kids. I did, I did help out in the mayor's, was, was it dinner, the mayor's dinner?
The community, the community meal at One Bistro.
The community meal, and I've learned that bussing tables, I've lost the skill, I used to do that. I used to bust tables when I was like seventeen, nineteen, you know?
It's not like riding a bike, you just pick a bike.
I've lost the talent of busting tables, so, but anyway, I enjoyed being there, it was, it was, it was a tremendous turnout, the people were sincere, appreciative, and I enjoyed doing that, so, and I just served, so that, with that, I pass.
Great, great, thank you, thank you. Councilman Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President, I don't have anything else to add to that.
Great, thanks, I believe I. Mr. Vice President?
Sure. Last week I was one of the members that attended the budget meeting, chaired by Councilman Reynolds, so thank you very much for that, that actually was about two-hour meeting, so thanks to everybody for your time in that, also like to just thank those four citizens tonight that we just nominated and put in place as volunteers for our committees, and a lot of these, these committees, it's kind of a thankless job, they do meet once a month, as you said, it's, they're not paid, so we certainly can't thank them enough for their volunteer to do that. I think we have one down when that came late.
Oh.
I don't know if he wanted us to?
Sure, would you like to?
Did you want to address council, sir?
Yeah, yes, but I can wait till the end.
Nope, go.
Okay, so we, we actually missed, we had public comments already, I, I saw you, you came to the, the clipboard, so that's, we'll, we'll convene to the president to see if he'll allow you to do that.
Yeah, why don't you come, go ahead.
And that's all I had, thank you.
Just state your name and your address and?
Mike Cameron, I'm from Springfield, Ohio, and I was here, oh, probably six or seven meetings ago?
Yeah.
To talk about the bicycle path, and I've seen no change there, and I spoke with, tried to get ahold of a city traffic person yesterday, and I, I think I'll tell you a message at home.
Yes.
And I've seen no action, okay, and the story you get is, if you talk to the park folks, it's the city's problem.
Right.
And if you talk to the, and they say, the city says, you know, we can't do anything about it, and, you know, there's always a solution to a problem if people are willing to step up to it, you know, where everybody says, oh, if we put up a stop sign by McDonald's, so the cars stop as they come out, then if somebody gets hurt, we could be liable, you know, but by the same token, it's state traffic law that says you have to stop before you come across a sidewalk when you're leaving a business or an alley, so, if they put up a stop sign, all it would be doing is reminding the people that there is a legal requirement for them to stop, you know, there's, you know, it wouldn't bother my heart to see that entrance and exit restricted and have the traffic come out on Kinsey Road, because Kinsey Road is a lot less traveled road, and it would make, it would make it easier for people getting in and out, and then, you know, people wouldn't be turning across the busy lu, road to come in, you know, if they're coming from north, they'd be turning in, or they wouldn't be turning out again across the big, busy road if they were going south, but I think there's a solution that you all have, you know, somewhere in your toolbox?
Right.
To, to take and try to fix it, and, you know, I'd be happy to work with, you know, somebody from, you know, the city to, to brainstorm, because sometimes brainstorm is somebody told me was just nothing but cerebral popcorn?
Right.
You know, so, I think, I think there's a solution out there for us, but, you know, it's going to take someone wanting to be helpful, and sometimes, you know, getting, you know, if it's the Air Force or, you know, private industry or whatever, sometimes it's hard to get people to want to be, want to be helpful, and that's what I'd like to see you guys be?
Sure.
Part of the solution.
Yeah, yeah. Mike, thanks for coming back, and thanks for being persistent and keeping that on the record.
Yeah, I mean, the square wheel gets oil, or, or the train goes off the track, and we don't want the train to go off the track, that's right. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Couple things to report from the last two weeks. On Saturday, February tenth, I had an opportunity to speak to a group of four-H kids out at the Zion Church, and they, we talked a little bit about One Bistro, we talked a little bit about being mayor, and we covered a whole lot of ground in between, so they had a lot of questions about a lot of things, and it was an honor to speak to them.
them. Tuesday, February 13th, had the privilege of singing the national anthem to the Xenia Women's Republican Club, then followed that night also by the Township Association meeting. They presented a little bit about the, the, I'm sorry, the night, thank you, 911. Ow.
It's okay.
My brain's a little farther than 911 plan that Nathan is working on, so an update about that. Also talked about the RACE grant that we, along with Sugar Creek, Belbrook, and Yellow Springs have been working on, getting support for that. So very excited about that grant money, and hopefully we, we get that. Wednesday, February 14th, spoke to two different classes at Central State University, spoke to their local and state government class, and then the second class was their policy class, and just great dialogue, had good discussion with the students, and really enjoyed those two classes. On the 15th, attended the Beaver Creek Chamber link, because it was actually here in Xenia. They held it at the Green County Fish Feed Pantry, so had a chance to visit with Gail Mattson and hear her talk about the work that she's doing primarily in Xenia, but really for the whole county, the garden that, that they have, the new building that they are building, just a lot of great work that's going on right here in our backyard. On February 16th, I attended the funeral of Dick Walker, and I wanted to mention that. Specifically, he has been somebody who has been deeply, deeply invested in this community. And he's, most people know him from Cedarville University and the time that he spent there years, decades. The Rock is there because of him. I think every one of us that went to Cedarville or worked at Cedarville have stories about Dick Walker. But in, in these later years of life, he was heavily invested in One Bistro and, and in our community here in Xenia. In fact, before he went into the hospital, his family had already scheduled to sponsor the community meal this coming Wednesday. And just, just very, he has a heart for people that is passionate. He loves following up with people, always keeping in touch with people, having breakfast with people. I know I personally was encouraged by him many times. I'd see him out walking into the bistro, and he would just give me a hug and always encourage me, so he'll be very messed. Tuesday, February 20th, we had the swearing in of our newest firefighter, Josh Haverson, so excited to have him join our crew. And then yesterday, Wednesday, the 21st, attended Wolverforce University, had a luncheon in Dayton, and it's a leadership luncheon to talk about, just where Dr. Newkirk, their president, is taking the university, and he has an amazing vision for that university. His vision is that it'll be the MIT of the HBCUs. He is, he's got ideas and plans, and he is highly motivated, and it is a joy to hear him speak and how he wants to help students become successful. So I, I'm very excited. It was a packed house for the luncheon.
He doesn't want to be the Caltech, he wants to be the MIT, okay?
I love it. And then that same day, last night was Mayor's and Managers, the group that I'm the president of, and that was in Riverside. No legislation, no legislative report that night. Tomorrow is the Xenia High School Science Fair. Going to be a judge, I'm all excited.
Great.
I don't want to do it. I'm going to judge him. That's all I have.
Just flip with wisdom.
Sure.
Just our, our Budget Finance Committee met, and I just want to tell Ryan and the, and the rest of the folks, thanks for all the great information. One of the things we go over there is our, you know, projection going out as well, and you know, things are, things are tight but looking good for the city. And just also, there's, there's a lot of caveats in those projections, and so we spent a lot of time in the budget finance talking about the specific caveats and which ones, if they go this way or that way, that we'll, that we'll go with it. We also went through that, as has been already mentioned, you know, the, so we're, we're committed to the, as a council, I, I would say, at least from a discussion standpoint, to the new fire station, but there's stages to that, and we just felt it was appropriate to make sure we had the proper funding for the stages that could be accomplished in, in this year, so it was the last modification we had to do. It was, it was a wonderful time at Central State to, to be able to be there and represent the city, and the, the mayor had another commitment, so she, she asked James and I to go, and James, thanks for going with me. And we, it was, it was a great opportunity to meet a lot of folks from that community there as well, too, and have some discussions with them, too. So thanks for giving us the opportunity to go to that. I would just mention that this is the 10-year anniversary this week of the Maidan Revolution in the Ukraine.